To the Plimpton zoning board of appeals. My name is Suzanne Jafarian and I currently serve as chair for this committee. To my right is Ethan Stiles and he serves as the secretary. And if you were here last meeting, he also served as the chair last meeting. Next to Ethan is Lucas Kowalski, right?
Yes.
Kowalski. The three of us make up the board. We also have two alternates, Dave Alberti and Alan Wheelock. So that's, as you know, anybody who was here last time and I wasn't, you know, I wasn't here. I wasn't feeling very well. But Dave and Alan willingly, graciously came on this board as alternate. So per regulations, if I were to miss a second meeting or any of us missed two meetings, one of them would serve in terms of voting. To my left is town council Carolyn Murray. And she's amazing and will be helping and coaching us along the way. I am just, I did want to, since I've already missed a meeting and I'm the closest member to possibly not be able to vote, I'm actually going to nominate Ethan to serve as chair for the 40B meetings. Can I get a second for Ethan to serve as chair?
Yes, I will second him.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Ethan's going to take over. He's going to serve as chair. I'll still be here. We might, well, we might bounce back and forth a little bit and we'll all be asking questions and involved. But I'm gonna, I'll give the floor to...
Madam Chair, do you just want to also announce that you reviewed all the materials from that one meeting?
Oh, yes. Thank you so much. Yes, I did. Just so everybody knows, I listened to the recording of the meeting twice and have reviewed all the material. So I am up to date. I feel pretty good about serving on the committee. I just want to make sure that we have the continuity in terms of chairing. So that's...
All right. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair.
Suzanne.
Actually, you were doing a better job than I did last time. I couldn't remember his last name when I was announcing people. I don't know, maybe we should...
I did write it down. That helps.
All right. So last time we, the applicant, we opened the hearing and at that time we indicated that we would need to have, the next hearing would be to review the applications for peer review services, which would, you know, take a second look at the materials the applicant has provided in several areas, such as civil engineering, stormwater management, traffic, noise, pollution, light, architecture, all that sort of, all that sort of thing. Because this is, you know, a lengthy process and also very involved one, especially with the 60 units proposed and built. So since that time of the last meeting, which was back in May, let's see, hold on here. What was the date of that? Let's see, that was May 28th. So exactly, almost 30 days from today. We've asked Mr. Kowalski here to reach out to firms to solicit for peer review services and we have one, I think it was two proposals. I've only seen one, but I think you received two proposals. Is that correct?
I think originally we received the proposal from Merrill Engineering and it could be a possible conflict of interest. And we received another one from JDE, yes, from JDE Civil Engineering.
Okay. All right, that's, all right, that's great. That's the Driscoll proposal, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So anyway, so Lucas, as you've been perhaps the most involved in it, would you like to go over what they're proposing and so on?
I don't know. First of all, we don't know if there is a conflict of interest or not and we only have two options to choose as of now.
Yes, I, yes, actually, I spoke to the applicant's project manager. What's his name, Peter?
Paul Cusman.
Paul Cusman, that's right. I spoke to him on Wednesday. He called me and he mentioned, you know, about the Driscoll proposal. He said they had been, they had done some work in the past with, that his firm, Delphic, had done some work in the past with JDE Civil. However, that's pretty much in this industry, you know, around this area, sooner or later that they would do business with everybody at some point. So essentially, it's like, you know, there's only so many, the pond is only so big and everybody's, you know, everybody's, you know, dealt with everybody before. So I think, you know, when we only have two options, you know, there may be conflict, but obviously we have to be, only have some unlimited options on who we can go with in terms of selecting the peer review process. Do we have any further details about that, about the conflict, about any potential conflicts with JDE Civil? So I don't remember how, I can't remember if Mr. Cusman was very specific on the phone with me, but I do believe he did mention that they had, that his firm did have some dealings with them in the past.
And the largest problem was the traffic engineer, to find a traffic engineer. And JDE, they asked why there is no proposal, because we never received any traffic plan. And I don't know if it should be part of the application or not.
Well, actually, as I read the proposal here, it looks, you know, that's also something Mr. Cusman indicated, you know, that JDE Civil by themselves don't, can't handle a traffic study. But they have, they have put in their proposal, I think it's called Section 2, Traffic Engineering Research Services, essentially they'll utilize this company called Bowman. I saw it on here somewhere. It says Bowman something or other. And that they would hand, as subcontract, they would handle the traffic study and they have the resume of this lady who would be producing those services, it appears. So I think our contract with that, the proposal, sorry, with JDE would cover the traffic study.
Yeah, but it's complete. The proposal is complete. So it should cover all the areas.
Now, the Bowman Consulting Group, that's the, that's the traffic study subcontractor. So it does, it does appear that, that most of the ground would be covered in this proposal between, they have two sections here. It's called Section 1, which is civil engineering, and Section 2, which is traffic engineering. And they give, they break down, they give estimated costs for each item. And that would be what the services, I understand, they would be providing to us as peer review consultants.
So they'd be kind of like the contractor and they'd be subbing out...
Yes.
The traffic in, okay.
Most of the, most of those companies would.
Okay.
Because it's very hard to get a traffic engineer.
So...
Cusman forwarded me a proposal from Vannes, who has done traffic studies on other 40B projects we've done, and he had me sign the contract this week. So can you guys talk to Paul about that? I'm not sure what's customary, but I signed a proposal for a traffic study this week.
On this project or another project?
This project.
Okay. And who did you sign it with?
Vannes.
Okay. That's not the same firm that JDE Civil's proposing to use?
No.
Different firm.
Okay.
But should the traffic study be part of original application or no?
Sorry, I was trying, it typically is part of the application.
And I think it would be important in this, in this case because of the geography of that area and also the fact that there's also another town involved.
So even the traffic engineer had nothing to review at this point?
Correct.
Okay, so... Okay, so essentially what it sounds like, what we'll have is that Mr. Opachinski will present his traffic study and our people will present their traffic study and then they would have a discussion and go over, and go over the relevant findings and see where there's agreement and where there may need to be alterations or changes to the plan.
Correct. And typically, the town's peer review consultant will also offer some suggestions for like mitigation that we can incorporate into a decision if necessary.
All right. So as I understand this now, has any, has, before I continue, has everyone, the cover letter wasn't part of the initial packet that I received. I got it a little later. It's dated June 12, 2025. Has anyone had an opportunity to review that? It's four pages long. I think it's probably the meat of this. There's a bunch of supplementary material, but, and then there's this agreement contract thing later on in the thing. But ultimately, you know, what they're proposing, I think, is summed up reasonably well in the four, in the four pages of their cover letter. So has anyone, you know, not had a chance to read that or have questions about it based on whatever's in that document? Or anything else, of course, that was part of the proposal? Because they, for example, they included a, some peer review documentation from a project that they handled in Avon, which is totally unrelated, I believe. And, and so, you know, I guess it's supplemental material to show what, you know, the breadth of their experience and what they provide. So does, does anyone have any questions or comments on the materials that have been submitted, you know, as part of the, as part of JDE's application? All right. All right, so then, okay, so now, now the costs, we, you know, we, you know, there's, there are two costs, right? And in the proposed, and in the proposal, JDE makes a suggestion, let's see, that I wanted to mention here. Okay. Where, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it in this document. And, all right, so we, all right, so I'm reading from the letter here. It says, "We recommend that the ZBA request initial deposit of at least $15,000 from the applicant to be deposited in a 53G account from which the ZBA will pay JDE's initial retainer deposit and invoices. We also recommend that the balance in the 53G account, that should the balance in the 53G account drop below a determined amount of $2,500, the applicant will be required to bring the account balance up to $7,500. You know, the replenishment will continue until such time as project is approved, denied, or withdrawn, and such time that the remaining amounts, after paying what's due to JDE, will return to the applicant." So that is what they're proposing. Now, they, the estimated cost, they have the two section. One for the, Section 1, which I believe is civil engineering and stormwater services, and that was, they estimated the cost to be $16,450. And Section 2 of the traffic study would be $21,500. And the total estimated cost of services would be $37,950.
Those are both bloated figures. Merrill was much cheaper than JDE and my contract for a traffic study, $6,000. I don't believe we should be doing two traffic studies, by the way. So maybe town council can lay on whose responsibility it is. But I've never had a project that you've had two separate traffic studies on.
If I may, Mr. Chair, it's peer review consulting. So they review the traffic report prepared by the applicant. They determine whether they've used standard practices and methodologies used in the, in the industry and whether they agree with those practices and then make some recommendations or findings based on that. You're not paying someone to actually conduct a second traffic report.
Well, I'm doing the entire traffic study for $6,000, so how can they charge $21,000 to review it? That's ludicrous.
Now, one thing I, now, I'm just reading off the page and it says, I'm sorry, Peter, I don't think I, we don't think we actually sent this to Paul, did we? The JDE proposal?
I have not seen it.
All right. Well, I'll make sure to get that to you tomorrow. Or Mr. Cusman, and he can distribute it to you.
Sure.
All right. I'm sorry about that. I should have given it to you before. All right, so it says, let me just read a little bit about what Section 2 is saying. It says, "Traffic Engineering Review Services." All right. Bowman will provide the following. Task 1, traffic impact and access study and site plan review. It says...
Who has the proposal?
Uh, we'll get the, get the site plans, the traffic, traffic study and prior transportation studies, if there are any of those things. Conduct a field visit to access existing roadway conditions for a one-week period. Observe general traffic operations. Add study area intersections for conformance. Confirm site distance measurements and confirm other application materials. Review the traffic impact and access study by, by, and site plans, et cetera, et cetera. So town coun, so Carolyn, it does seem like that the, that the scope of their services does suggest a full traffic study, as I've read their proposal.
If I may, though, if you, if you look at the tasks, I mean, certainly they have to look at the existing plans and, you know, do a field visit to get the lay of the land of the intersections, et cetera.
Yes.
But the third bullet point down says that they review the traffic assessment developed by VAI. VAI is Vannes Associates, whom the applicant has just indicated they've hired to do their traffic report. So they are going to review VAI's report and data. It doesn't say that they are actually going to conduct a duplicate traffic study.
I mean, the second bullet point, I thought, you know, it says, "Conduct a field visit to access existing roadway conditions during one peak period. Observe general traffic operations and study intersection conform with capacity analysis. Confirm site distance measurement and conform with..." Is that not within a complete traffic study?
Not typically, no. I think that consultants will still go out there just to get familiar with the location and see if they agree as to some of the things that the applicant's traffic engineer has, have reported.
Well, you know, now I think we have an issue that Mr. Opachinski believes that the, that the proposal is too costly. And obviously, you know, and, you know, that he's, you know, he's the one who, who's he has to pay to, pay for it or object to it. So, I mean, in this sort of situation, do you have any recommendations for us?
Well, two things. Number one, by statute, the only basis the applicant has to object to whoever the board chooses is either the chosen peer review consultant has a conflict of interest, meaning they've done, you know, work on the consultant's side, or could not somehow or other be neutral reviewing this project, or the applicant can challenge whether or not any of the folks identified here are qualified to perform the review. But you can still consider Merrill's proposal, too, this evening.
I don't, I'm not sure if I, I couldn't find, I'm not sure if I could, if I found all that. Maybe it wasn't an email, but I just, because I know we definitely had concerns because of Merrill's current relationship with, and, you know, and I understood that JDE may have had a past relationship with Mr. Opachinski's firm, but obviously, you know, we're kind of limited on who we can...
Right.
There's only just so many fish in that pond, in the pond.
Well, the other thing to consider, too, is that this is just really to get the project started, you know, and these, these cost estimates are just that, estimates. We may go through this and, number one, we might refine the scope a little bit. I find it kind of interesting that this proposal refers to VAI's study that has been done when we've just learned tonight that the applicant just signed the contract with VAI. If you remember when we here last month, I asked about the traffic assessment and Mr. Cusman said they were still discussing it, so...
But I was in touch with them, so the, the JDE contacted, I CC'd the Paul from the, Mr. Opachinski...
Mr. Cusman.
Yes, and Paul, and Paul gave the name to the, to the JDE Civil Engineering. So how about we choose the, we have to choose the company, right, to move on?
Yeah, correct.
So I would like to make a motion to choose JDE.
Hold on, Mr., I think, let him speak.
I think it's premature. Why does Merrill's proposal cover reviewing the traffic?
I think in the proposal, unfortunately, I have no internet access and I'm an IT guy. I work only with computers, so I have my notes and paperwork over there. If I remember correctly, the proposal was only like an hourly rate, so scope to be determined with an hourly rate for around $200, if I remember correctly, but...
You know, I thought it was around $9,000, though, their estimate. Why spend $16?
That's why I would like to, I would like to pick up on one company. Really doesn't matter which one, to move on and we can leave the traffic part for the, for the next meeting. We don't have to, I believe we don't have to hire...
Well, the traffic part is part of this proposal, includes the traffic part, right?
But we don't have to...
Unless we were to...
We could separate it, though.
Yes.
Okay. I got you.
There shouldn't be any problem.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
So just move on and whatever guys you feel comfortable with.
So as I understand, the suggestion here, that we could make a motion to approve this proposal as to Part 1 only, that's the general seven, Section 1, that's the general civil engineering, and then when we get the traffic study materials, Mr. Opachinski's firm, then we could have an opportunity to revisit the peer review as to that particular aspect of the project.
We could do that?
Yes, you could.
All right.
Just so we can get the ball on.
Now, the, now, I do, you know, I do want to point out the suggestion of JDE, I think, about, about initial deposit of $15,000, I think is something, something that Mr. Cusman and I had talked around, our numbers, you know, we do need something in the, in the 53E account to get the process started. So I would suggest that the $15,000 figure be the initial deposit amount, given that we do have an estimated cost that would support, I mean, again, as I said, it's an estimate, it's not a final number. We may not get that, may not get that high, but I think that would be appropriate to request of the applicant as part of the peer review process.
Does that make sense to you?
If you're going to pick Merrill, yeah.
Well, again, it's the ZBA's choice who they pick.
But it's my money and I, I know, I hear what you're saying, but can we just use a little common sense? Why hire, you're going to hire someone to paint your house, you got one quote is $12,000, another one is $17,000. Who are you going to hire?
Why should we hire somebody you recommend?
Huh?
Why should we hire somebody you recommend?
I'm just saying, you've got two proposals and if they're equal, why, why go with the higher one? That makes no sense.
We also have to consider the current conflict. Now, I think that's the reason why we were probably, I think some of us expressed certain reservations about Merrill at the last meeting. I think it was, I think their name was floated. And I think that we thought that, given that there is current other business with, with the company, that I'm not sure we would be comfortable. And I, again, I haven't seen the Merrill proposal, so, but I've seen the JDE proposal. It's, you know, it seems, you know, fairly comprehensive as to the points that we're likely to initially encounter in the next, at the next meeting. So I think I'm inclined to recommend JDE.
And on top of that, JDE Civil Engineering was in contact with me, so we exchanged multiple emails and he asked questions, detailed questions. I referred him to Paul and so it was like a good communication to begin with. The Merrill, there was, I had literally zero communication with anyone.
Yeah, so...
All right, then. All right, so I think, I think, I think I have the consensus of the meeting. Do, does anyone else have anything to say on that subject? All right, then. Then here's what I would do. I would make a, I would make a motion that we, that we accept JDE Civil's proposal as to Part 1 only at the present, at the present time, and, this might need two motions, and move that the applicant deposit issued a check for $15,000 to be deposited in a 53G account.
Don't be silly.
So moved.
Wait, wait, hold on before I do that. I want to ask town council. Would that be one motion or two motions?
That's fine, just one.
All right. All right, as well.
And then move.
Is anything, is anything else we need to put in the motion? Okay. All right, so, all right, that's, that's the motion on the table.
Okay, second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we have, so we have moved the amount and the peer review consultant, again, as to Part 1, I guess. Now, now, there is a signature page, so what I would do is I would, I would, I would sign and I would, you know, put a caveat, you know, as to Part 1, present time, and we'll, we'll stumble back once we have the, the, the traffic study from Mr. Opachinski's firm. And that's, and I think that's pretty much what we're here to decide tonight.
Well, we also want to work on future meetings.
Oh, yes, future meetings. Yeah, absolutely.
Scheduling.
Okay. So, all right, so... All right, so did you have, Lucas, when you talked to JDE, did they give you any sense of how long they would need or what, for them to, for them to, you know, present us in terms of giving feedback on the applicant's civil engineering proposals?
No.
All right, well...
It would be now hard to...
Is there, is there anything that they would need that they don't already have for that, for to...
I think they have everything except this, the traffic study, right?
All right.
That was the only thing missing.
All right, so, all right, then, I think, you know, we should probably meet back here in about four weeks' time, or, does that make sense?
Yeah.
After the holiday?
I think that'd be the 21st. If we do, if we kept Thursday.
Does anyone have a problem with Thursdays as a general issue?
Yes.
You do? You have trouble with Thursdays?
Mondays and Thursdays. And also, I don't know how, how do you guys want to do it? I'm leaving to Europe August 8th for six weeks.
Oh, right. So, well, so you would miss one meeting if we did it?
Yeah, if you do, I can miss one meeting.
Because you can miss one.
If you have space six weeks between missed meetings, then, but yes, most likely, yeah, I will miss my one meeting.
So when are you leaving again? August 8?
August 7.
August 7.
7. September 22.
So then...
As you said, August 7th to September 28th?
22.
22. All right.
And this is being recorded, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I should, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned in the beginning that this is being, that the meeting is being recorded by Area 58 local cable access. So everything that's been said here tonight and done here tonight shall be moralized on video, as well as audio.
Thank you.
All right, so, you know...
Then he would just miss the one meeting in August.
Okay. Now, as, as I understand, we have 180 days from the date the hearing opens to conclude it, absent extension.
Correct.
So that means that we, that we should, that we, as we opened on May 28th, that means we should...
Have roughly till around Thanksgiving.
Around Thanksgiving, yeah. Actually, Black Friday, it was November 20th. All right, so anyway, so we do, so we do definitely want to get this process rolling, so, all right. Now, Lucas, now Lucas said Thursday's not great for you.
But Tuesdays, Tuesdays are better for me, too. So I just...
Tuesdays.
Wednesdays are just not checking for me, so...
All right, so, all right, so the next Tuesday is the 1st, the 8th, it's a little too soon. The 15th and the 22nd seem to be the best day. Oh, we also have a, okay, we have a hearing on different, a different case on the 9th, we shouldn't do the 8th. So probably the 15th is, might be the best date to have the next meeting.
So we'll get in a little sooner, but...
Do we have a meeting on the 9th?
Yeah, we, yeah, we do. That's, that's different application.
Can we do this at the same day? Just a short meeting and then I will have time to contact JD and ask how much time he needs for the review and we will know more details.
All right.
So maybe try to...
And then we'll schedule, schedule the meeting with our reviewer. Because without the reviewer, basically, it's, we cannot do anything. We need somebody who will present us and explain everything.
Question?
Yeah, Plating Board uses this can build this officer first and third Tuesday of the month. We meet here 6:30.
Oh, conflict.
First and third, so we could do second or fourth.
Okay. All right. Okay, first and, you said first and third Tuesdays of the month?
Correct.
All right.
We could do the 15th, right?
No, that's the 3rd.
Oh, that's the 3rd.
All right. Well, he, you know, here's, you know, I like Lucas's idea... Well, you know, here's, you know, I like Lucas's idea, you know, suggestion because, you know, we do have the hearing on the 9th, which is, you know, in this room, which is otherwise unoccupied. Okay, and so what we, you know, obviously, you know, we wouldn't do two full hearings back-to-back, that's ridiculous. You know, considering what the civil engineer has to propose for them and the other hearings totally unrelated, different, special permit for a different thing. You know, that's, you know, too, that's too much. But anyway, if we need to have a short, you know, almost like a business meeting to, you know, to update and plan the next step, you know, I think that's...
Maybe I will ask him to come for half an hour and, you know, to talk to the engineer.
Were you going to suggest, like, doing it that Thursday? Because that's, for a short meeting?
I'm actually on the Wednesday.
Oh, as part of that meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, as long as we do notice, as long as we do notice properly, we can do whatever we want.
Perfect, that works for me.
Alright, so, alright, so the next, alright, so the next hearing on this matter will be on July 9th, that's Wednesday. Let's see. Let's see, the other hearing is scheduled for 6:30. You want to do that earlier, you should probably do that earlier so that people know when to come, rather than just sitting around for another hearing that they have no interest in. So I was just doing that at 6 o'clock. And then if that needs to spill over a little, that's fine.
Okay.
So...
So do 6:00 PM on the 9th?
Yeah, 6:00 PM on the 9th.
Okay. So if people want to come for that, they can come and then go, or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course, obviously, they're welcome to stay if they're interested in the other project, which is also in the industrial zone. Sure that, you know, that's, but that's a special permit case. Actually, Carolyn, you know, that, you know, I'm not sure, I've not mentioned that to, you know, discussed that with you, but that might be something that we might, could use your assistance for, if you wouldn't mind staying.
That evening?
Or coming early, because if we do...
No, 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 because, you know, I mean, I don't think, you know, you know, we may not need you there particularly for the half an hour that we might devote to other things, but it might actually be useful for you to come. But if you're already there, you know, we might need your assistance for the special permit that comes after that, based on what's going, based on what's being proposed, which is essentially the construction of three buildings in the industrial zone. But anyway, but we can talk about that, I can ask Liz for that because it's a separate matter.
Okay. At the moment, I have a conflict with July 9th, but it's still to be confirmed. So I'll put a hold on the calendar and I'll know better hopefully next week.
Alright. Alright, so, alright, so we've skipped, alright, so I don't think we need a motion to schedule scheduling of the hearing, but... So I think right now that's, alright, so on the 9th, let's just make sure we... Alright, so on the 9th, we're discussing this matter, right? So essentially, at that point, we expect, we will meet with JDE's representative and they will discuss, you know, will they discuss issues with the... With the, you know, will they give their presentation regarding the applicant's engineering? Or what will they talk about? So I have some kind of agenda, so I have some kind of...
Mr. Chair, if I...
We have to discuss agenda with them and their availability. I think we have to, we both have to schedule the meeting, so, you know...
Well, we scheduled the meet, we scheduled a tentative meeting, right? If the thing needs to change, we can always change it at a later time. Always change it a later time if they're not available for the 9th. But we'll schedule a tentative meeting for the 9th to 6th and ask they can be here. And then they can, then they can, you know, give us an idea of what they can, you know, what they can talk about. And obviously, it have, should be within, you know, 48 hours in advance so I can, you know, post an agenda, you know, so that people know that there's a, you know, not just that there's a meeting, but there's a meeting, what's going to be talked about at that meeting. Obviously, they can make their arrangements according if they wish to come or view it.
If I may add to that, Mr. Chair, in my experience with the 40Bs, typically what would happen is we haven't heard from the applicant's engineer yet at all. We did have the overview by their representative, but if you remember, McKenzie Engineering Group wasn't able to be here at the last meeting. And I don't see anyone here this evening either. So typically, you would have the applicant's engineer put the plans up and go through the design, the stormwater management, you know, everything related to the civil engineering of the project. You would then have our peer review consultant sort of respond to that, like, look at it and respond to it, like where they see that perhaps there's some things that still need to be addressed or some things that weren't entirely provided for in the plans or maybe they disagree with some of the stormwater calculations, that type of thing.
Now regarding, now regarding that, the application materials that were submitted do include, you know, a stormwater report that's fairly lengthy.
Right.
That's fairly lengthy. And also, you know, several plans, you know, of architectural and site plans, that sort of thing. Is there anything else that we would expect from McKenzie as far, in terms of written material in support of their civil engineering work?
Only if there's any reason for them to revise the plans. So what I expect is going to happen, once you retain JDE, is JD is going to go through all of the materials, the stormwater, the plans, everything, and going to provide this initial written response of what's missing, what needs to be clarified, or anything that they might happen to need to reconcile. McKenzie Engineering Group is going to take that document, is going to respond to it. And it becomes a living document throughout the hearing process for the board. So as you get to the point where matters are resolved, they'll be reported as resolved, things that are still outstanding, we know that we need to do something with. And again, it also helps to, bless you. It also helps to formulate conditions that we might incorporate into a decision.
Now...
But that's not, but this meeting, this half an hour would just be to get some information from JDE for us, correct? Because in 30 minutes, we're not going to be able, we can't do both of those in the same evening because we already have another meeting after that, 6:30.
I don't know, he can go briefly through the application documents or see what is missing or...
But I think that might, that be...
Call it like an initial review.
But I think that might, you know, not be the most efficient use of their time. Because I think what Carolyn's describing is, you know, Mr. Opachinsky's civil engineer, he comes, he gives a presentation and then our peer review consultant can respond, can respond to that, either at the meeting or at writing, however. And then we can, you know, go through it and say what we agree about, what change in that.
So when we hear the presentation from, let's say, McKenzie Engineering, should our peer review be present here?
Yes, that would make the most sense, yeah.
So that's what we want to schedule.
And if he should be present here, he should know the documents and the plans before that and be familiar with that, right, already?
So, and the 9th would probably, would be too soon for him to have that anyways.
Especially with the holiday in between, yes.
Yes.
I'm not sure who actually spoke with Paul Cusson from Delphic.
I think, you're a good question, I'm not sure.
My understanding that he would pick the consultant. Plans would then be forwarded to that consultant. He would have a chance to review the plans and documents prior to the next meeting, which would take place in about a month, so that everybody had time.
Yeah, so maybe two, so...
So that the next meeting here would be more productive, where the engineers had a chance to look at the plans and they can get on the, kind of on the same page when we have the next meeting here.
Alright, so here's, alright, so I think we're all in agreement on this point. So here's what I suggest, right? Let's schedule, next the 9th, right? You know, we're not going to discuss anything about this on the 9th. We'll do it, we'll do just a general meeting on, for this proposal only, on the 22nd. If that works for everybody. And at that time, you know, as you said, you know, the two engineers will have a chance to review their documents and just talk and then you can have the presentation, they can have response.
That makes more sense.
So is everyone free on the 22nd? Is that going to be terrible?
And that's at 6:30?
Yeah, it's at 6:30.
I'm free. But then, if you maybe do it later, because I'll be six weeks absent, so... In case if you want to do a meeting every month, then I will be missing 20 minutes.
You're still on the, oh...
Well, let's see.
Because you leave on the 7th, but I mean...
29 is one month from here, from now, right? July 29th?
22nd.
29th. If we do it 29th.
I was supposed to do it on the 22nd, but you wanted to do it on the 29th?
Yeah, and then I will leave.
Is that four weeks?
Then I will leave and you will only have one week. So I will miss my one meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I hear what you're saying, I think that's a good idea.
Want to do it on the 29th, is it?
Yeah, just because of that. Because if you're going to spread out for four weeks, he'll miss one meeting, so...
Alright, we might, you know, depending on what else we might do, we might have to cram a few meetings into late September and October and November.
That's okay. I mean, people aren't traveling as much then either, right? So 6:30 and the 29th.
Alright. And, alright, and at that, and then I put on the agenda that we would expect to hear a presentation from McKenzie Engineering on the civil engineering aspects of the project and, you know, and possible peer review response from JDE. Alright?
Sounds good.
Alright, well, at this point, I think that's all we can accomplish at this meeting. So unless anyone else has any further observations or comments they want to make, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting until...
Can we first just take a motion to continue the hearing to July 29th at 6:30? Thank you. So it's clear to folks who are perhaps watching at home.
Alright, so, okay, so who would like to make a motion to continue the hearing until July 29th at 6:30?
I make a motion to continue the, until July 29th.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very well. Meeting is concluded.
Thank you. Yeah, because you'd have to give another one in four weeks. That makes, that made the most sense.
Because you can miss a meeting and still...
And then we may have to, while he's gone. And like you said, if we need to put a couple extra in the file, then that's what we do.
Where can I get the password?
Town clerk, maybe?
Yeah, it's around, it's like, I want to say it's PTH Guest.
That's where it is here.
I don't use it on the wall.
Let's see if I can... I can connect. But I can't connect the back screen.
PTH Guest is the name of this?
Yeah, that's...
Wifi PTH Guest.
Yeah, there is a public, there is a public spot here.
It is public.
This is a public one, there's also a private one.
Oh, yeah, so PTH Guest is the, is the name, I just can't remember.
PTH Guest.
But the password is off the top of my head.
I don't know, I never used the password.
Nope.
So we didn't need to ask if people, I mean, this wasn't difficult?
Oh, damn, I missed it.
I think, I think that's it. F-L-A-S-P-T-H-G and then U-E-S-T. But I connect automatically.
I think it must be on one of these things somewhere, but...
But it should auto-connect.
Yeah, it should, if you're saved.
That's the hookup for...
Is the G uppercase or lowercase?
It's just uppercase. And lower for U-E-S-T. We just did it with that, okay.
I'm blind.
That's like driving like this.
Part of the civil engineering?
No, that's stormwater, yeah.
That's stormwater, okay. And that will be later.
Actually, well, I mean, that is part of their civil engineer, yeah, civil engineering, so we will talk.
I guess we officially adjourned, right?
I was just curious.
I mean, that might be just, now the meeting depends on how far we get to the next one. It's the most lengthy document of the watch.
Yeah, yeah. And I get a bit too more involved. The further I'll, the better I'll be. Alright, motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second, the motion?
Second. All in favor?